Singing Johnny May Stice's choir in seventh grade. The old middle school. I think it was last time.
You need to keep your day job.
Agreed.
Ah, thank you.
I'm going through the list.
Is the mayor on?
He's certainly on. Just have a few seconds. Okay, are we all on?
Yes, Mayor, it looks like everyone in the council and Eric and Mr. Potter are on.
Okay, alright, good evening, everyone. Notice hereby given that City Council of City Alpine, Texas will hold regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 5th, 2020 via Zoom conference in the city of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www.cityofalpine.com. For the purpose of considering the attached agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the city council on any agenda item after determination of a quorum and proof of knowledge of the meeting. Zoom meetings, comments, comments and questions, rules and procedures are listed in the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to Megan Antrim at director.finance@ci.alpine tex, tex.us. If you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make, all names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be cued upon, given to the mayor and at the section of the meeting. Then I will call upon those individuals at one, one at a time, and our meeting moderator will take you off mute and to make your comments. This will function the same as your existing signup sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with the ward you reside in or have a business interest in. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits a council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a point to order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. And I'll call this meeting to order. We'll have the invocation, is someone going to give the invocation today, uh, city secretary?
No sir, just straight into the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, then we'll stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, for God.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 11 AM on May 1st, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, the only comments that I've received are, are related to action item nine on the agenda, so unless Cynthia or Megan received any, we can wait until we get to that section.
Okay.
No, Mayor, I did not receive anything except for the action item number nine.
Same, same here.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to, I've got a presentation, uh, or a proclamation that I have to read, it's kind of special because my mom just turned 97 last year on her 98th birthday, and that kind of falls in line. This proclamation by Mayor Andres Ramos, City of Alpine, Texas, whereas for generations, mothers have led the charge toward a fairer and more inclusive country, embracing the task of ensuring our nation holds its highest ideals so that they, American, America's daughters know the same opportunity as American fathers and sons and whereas caring, loving without condition, given in our darkest moments, mothers put the interests of their children ahead of their own and are our first role models and earliest motivators and whereas we're biological fathers or adopted, mothers shape what we become as adults. Their lessons guiding us through life, moving our nation forward in the pursuit of a better and brighter future for their children and whereas mothers are inspiring embodiment of strength and determined drivers of progress. And through their example, our youth learn the values of grace, empathy and kindness. And whereas our community mothers deserve unwavering support at home and in the workplace and throughout our communities and whereas each of us is the son or daughter of a mother. So this week, let us, let, let's pay these extraordinary women the admiration and respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I Andres Ramos, Mayor of City of Alpine, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 10th through May 17th, 2020 as celebrating and honoring Mother's Week. In Alpine, and urge all citizens to be aware of the significant impact the, that mothers have had in the quality, improving the quality of life for Alpine families and in encouraging Alpine's young people to achieve their life's goal through passion, dedication and love. In witness or of, I hereby set my hand on this fifth day of May in the year 2020, Andres Ramos, Mayor of Alpine. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very befitting to all the mothers of Alpine and everywhere else in this country. And now we'll go to city attorneys to report, you have none, city manager.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, City Council, got a report this evening. And Megan, if you can pull, uh,
Two seconds.
Hector off mute as well.
I did that.
Perfect. And council and mayor, I did send you, uh, the hard copy of the PowerPoint if it's easier for you to go through it that way. And Hector, I went ahead and queued you up first for us.
Alright, Megan, we can go down to our case count, I think it's the third slide.
One up from there, Megan.
Okay, perfect.
That one.
Yep. Okay, so looking at our current case count, um, and this actually got an update as of this afternoon. So, um, Brewster County currently has one case, however, our active cases are down to zero. Um, the active case that we had from South County has been cleared and they met all of their requirements to be counted as a recovered case, including duration of symptoms and resolution of symptoms. So Brewster County does have one total case, but zero active cases at this time. Um, Ohinaga continues to stay at one case, you can see all of the other numbers down below. El Paso has had a slight bump in cases, the increase in El Paso cases has slowed down just slightly, um, it's not a lot, but it is a significant improvement from where we had seen, um, El Paso cases jump up week by week over the last two to three weeks. Um, Hector and Midland Counties continue to have, um, significant amounts of active cases. Hector County's decreased by, um, over 15 active cases in the last week, so we were in our high 30s, almost 40 active cases we were following, and we're now down to 22. So they have had a couple new cases of COVID come in, but that rate of new cases has been significantly less than those people that are recovering. And you can see where Midland and San Angelo continue to be down below. Um, there are still no cases in Presidio or Jeff Davis County as of today. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Okay, so looking at our trends in Texas, so you can see where we are as of today, our top right-hand corner graph. We can see that, uh, we did have a slight drop in the number of active cases about five days ago, but since then, we've had an increasing number of cases every day and not quite, um, the amount of recovered cases make that orange bar start coming down. Um, on our graphs at the bottom, our growth rate of new cases remains at 3% and our growth rate of deaths remains at 4%, that's not, um, very different than where we were, uh, last week. And you can see that the teal line that looks at new cases, it looked like in, in towards the middle and end of April, our case count was starting to decrease, but you can see over the last couple of days, we are back back up to close to 1,000 to 1,500 cases every day. Alright, we can go to the next slide. So these are our case counts as of today, this morning, so our cases, looking at the fourth column, that says cases per 1,000, so the US has about 3.7 cases per 1,000 people. Texas has 1.15 cases per 1,000 people, so we're a little less than half the rate of US. And then of course, as a tri-county, we have that one case in Brewster County so far. That brings us to 0.05 cases per 1,000. And if you look at testing, our testing numbers again, we're a little bit more than about half the testing, uh, rate of the country and almost on par with the testing rate as a state. So we do have some mobile testing coming into our area. Um, this coming weekend, we have Fort Davis on Sunday and Presidio on Monday. So we will have to, we will have to, uh, see what that brings our test rate back up to. Can go ahead and move to the next slide. Okay, so a couple important things that I just wanted to point out, um, for both our both ourselves and our medical community, um, there was a Texas Medical Board mandate related to the governor's orders, Governor GA19 specifically. So Texas Medical Board, um, provides some mandates on rules and regulations in clinics and hospitals, so as a medical professional, I think this is important to know, as of May 1st, masks are mandated for both patients and the physician or provider when within six feet of each other. And, um, of course, all other fall, policies for the clinic or facility regarding COVID-19 screening and testing still need to be followed. And, uh, most, if not all of our clinics and definitely the hospital have such screening protocols in place. And all patients must be screened for potential COVID-19 symptoms. They should have been screened at least once in the last 20 days, but that may not exclude a screening at the time of your appointment as well. We'll go to the next slide. So this is a really important, um, article that I wanted to send everybody. There has been this increasing discussion on, in the medical community about this false dawn situation. So it's when everything is looking better, but then it's almost like a false alarm and the situation takes a turn for the worse. So there is this increased discussion of a possible reactivation of COVID-19. So we have patients who had COVID-19, they had a positive test, they had symptoms. Then they symptomatically recover, so they do better, they are recovered, they feel better. Their test becomes negative, so now when we retest them, their test is now negative, they're over it. And then weeks later, they restart with symptoms and are retesting positive. And this is not a new infection, they have not been around somebody exposed to COVID. They've a lot of times been in self-quarantine, um, just because they had a recent scare of COVID, they're not out in the community. And the contact tracing is not finding any contact that would be causing them to be given COVID-19 again. So, does this mean that once you have COVID, you have COVID for a long time? Uh, similar to shingles or herpes simplex, uh, that's the thing that causes the cold sores. Is it a virus that once you have it, you have it for life and it sits in you and you can be, it can kind of present and, and go away, but it doesn't actually clear your system? And we're not sure, but it brings up a lot of unknown, you know, uh, uh, brings up a lot of questions that we don't know the answer to. So, and then what does that mean in terms of its ability or inability to create herd immunity? If you have it and you can kind of, again, have symptoms and illnesses again and again with COVID, then does that, does that mean that you can create herd immunity? And so it's bringing up a lot of questions, um, in terms of research and data, so just something to keep in mind as we try to prevent the spread of COVID, it may not be a one and done infection. We can go to the next slide. So this is just the flyer, um, for the testing for this weekend. So again, Fort Davis, it's going to be May 10th and Presidio May 11th. You still need to call the same number as last time or go to the website, texascovidtest.org and you go through, you have to register with your name, your address, your phone number that can receive text messages. Remember, text messages is how they're going to let you know that you have a, a negative, sorry, a negative test result. And, um, so you can go online or call the number to register for testing. And just like last time to schedule a test, they're not going to open up, uh, the testing schedule until 24 to 48 hours before those times. So Fort Davis's testing happens on a Sunday, so they won't open registration until Friday. And Presidio's won't open registration until Saturday, so. Alright, and then next slide. Okay, so, um, some questions and topics to address. So we, um, had that one positive case in South County from last week and, um, we got an update this afternoon about when results will be complete. So because of all of the mobile testing that's been happening across the state, as expected, all the labs across the state are in a huge backlog and are bottlenecked. So we have about 16% of the tests that still have not been run from two weekends ago. So we're hoping that that will be done sometime this week. I have a follow-up call on Friday to, uh, see if we've run all the tests through and we are essentially good to go. And, uh, if we don't get any phone calls between now and Friday, then that means that every, all the other tests that were pending, those last 16% uh, ended up being negative. So we'll have to see, but like I said, like, that puts us at about 30 tests that are still pending results. Um, and I'm hoping that we get all those things in before we hit this next week, next weekend's round of mobile testing. It would be nice to close off one chapter before we move to the next. Um, and then, uh, part of the recommendations that the governor had asked, um, every county to post, so there's some recommendations on the city website. Um, on additional recommendations and guidelines on how employers can keep employees safe and maybe screen, screen them for symptoms, how employees can stay safe as they interact with consumers, and then how us as individuals can keep ourselves safe and keep businesses safe as we, um, enter and exit retail locations. So there's some extra recommendations, they are, they are recommendations, there are some guidelines in there. To supplement those that are in the Open Texas Report that was published by the Texas Health Department and it's available online. So these are some extra things that I think maybe a little bit easier to do in a smaller town and smaller business venues, such as, um, maybe employees using a separate restroom than customers. We do know that fecal transmission, transmission in bathrooms is a possibility. So again, keeping employees, uh, safer compared, uh, from potentially infected customers, things like that. So there's some additional guidelines on there, again, they're just guidelines and some thoughts. But if folks are interested, they can go on the city website and look at them. And then the status of the attestation by the county going from 25 to 50%. We're still awaiting those last test results, so, um, I know it's been taking a lot longer than any of us were expecting, unfortunately. So, but we are still waiting on that, um, before we decide to move to 50% or not. Last, last I heard from, from Judge Gunno, and of course, that's, that's his decision in the end. And I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Escobar? Counsel?
No, I don't have any.
So far encouraging.
No questions?
No questions.
And we did, uh, those, those additional recommendations that Hector had shared with us. We, we've got those positioned on the COVID info and resources page on the city website. You know, really easy to read documents and, uh, we'll blog those out and repurpose those through the course of the week, I think some businesses, uh, and individuals will, uh, appreciate having those handy lists. So thanks for getting those to us, Hector.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, Megan, next slide. So one of the pieces that, you know, certainly caused, um, you know, a certain level of contention a week or so ago was, um, you know, wearing masks, right? Is it, is it optional, is it mandatory? Um, and then when the governor came out with GA, um, his, his governor's executive order 18, he encouraged, uh, masks, uh, as well as the CDC, but did not mandate. Uh, and then of course, uh, there is no ability to, to supersede the governor's order. Uh, with that being said, um, you know, we still understand and appreciate the wearing of a mask, uh, when you're in the public setting, whether it's a, you know, retail store, grocery shopping, hospital. And from a city perspective, as we encourage that type of behavior, um, it certainly makes a difference. That flyer on the right, um, is, uh, part of a two-page document that we had worked to pull together. Chief Martin and team handed that out to a variety of businesses around town, we posted it on our websites. Uh, the, the backside of that were, uh, steps that one could get help from if they needed help shopping, if they needed additional resource help. And so we took that back page and attached that, um, to, to flyers that went through the Sunshine House. We'd given it to, um, our Are You Okay Program recipients, as well as the food pantry, so we appreciate those groups handing this out. It's a, like I said, a two-page document. Yeah, we're, we're certainly, you know, I'm getting quite a bit of feedback. Uh, I know Cynthia's getting feedback, Chief Martin is, you know, we've got a lot of concerned citizens out there. I think Counselor Stevens and I had an interchange that went back two or three, uh, reiterations with a, with a citizen this morning relative to, uh, their feeling discomfort going into Porter's, uh, in the lack of people wearing masks. You know, one of the things that I did share with Porter's yesterday, uh, with Judd Porter was, uh, the initiative that Costco came out with nationwide yesterday, where if you don't wear a mask in the Costco, you just, you just can't go in. And that was a decision that the CEO and senior staff from Costco made just because they saw the importance in being able to provide protection for their patrons and for their employees. You know, I think probably the biggest challenge, uh, to overcome is always that cultural acceptance. You know, you go from a place that you typically don't wear masks, uh, it's not the cultural norm, so how do you shift into that? You know, certainly we look at other countries around the globe, uh, some of them that have dealt with, um, you know, severe virus outbreaks, uh, they've done a nice job at, at developing that cultural norm. And so, you know, when we look at it from a city perspective and our staff perspective, uh, we talk about, you know, how do we set the tone, how do we ensure we're, you know, wearing, uh, the masks in our work as we're interacting with, with public or community members. Chief Martin's done a nice job, working with his staff too. Um, you know, we certainly have, uh, projects going on in the field. As I shared the previous meeting, we've ordered, uh, PPE for all of our employees, our field, field teams, they'll all be issued five, um, and 95 masks. And our goal is to, to really continue to encourage our, our staff members. Certainly, we, we can mandate it in customer-facing situations, but set the tone from a city perspective. You know, I did think about, um, you know, just, you know, I call it Wear Your Mask Month. Just the, the more we do, the more culturally acceptable it becomes. Megan, if you go down, next slide. You know, so, so we think about the city operations piece too. You know, we're going to be certain continued normal hours of operation. We'll keep our lobbies closed through May. That way, uh, you know, really it's the utility billing that tends to have more traction in it than any other city office. We've, we've done a good job at working back with the citizens. In fact, Stephanie told me this, this morning that our non-pay on our water bills was the best it's been in several months, so, uh, whatever, uh, work they're doing there, it's, it's certainly working. And, uh, we, we really appreciate, uh, the communications we're getting from citizens. We're getting a lot more people that are using the online bill pay system. And, uh, so we'll, we'll go ahead and limit that, that interaction through May. Heather and I and Cynthia and Chris have talked about our visitor center, what makes sense there. We certainly, uh, think that Heather's done a really nice job at keeping data and information out on the porch there, um, as folks start venturing to the area. Whether, if they're not getting information online, they have the ability to, uh, walk up on the porch and grab information. Uh, so we think that's a good, a, a good method through the month of May. You know, the other big question right now is, you know, what do we do with the city pool, right? If you look at GA 18 from the governor, um, it talks about having, um, community pools closed, right? Same as gyms, uh, and other types of recreation facilities like that. Did reach out to TML and DSHS this week about any guidance that they're giving. And, uh, TML, Scott Houston, their, their general counsel replied to both Rod and I today and said they haven't issued any real guidance from, from a TML perspective. Uh, I did hear back late today from the Department of Health Services and they indicated they're just simply looking at, at GA 18 right now. And the governor, uh, has the, the community pools closed. And so, uh, we know that there'll be additional guidance on that, uh, as we move into the second and third week of May. With that being said, Hector and I had a nice conversation yesterday and from, you know, her perspective as local health authority, also as one of the largest advocates for children in the community. She says, Eric, you know, the, the disease transmission through the water droplets, uh, is, is really not a safe situation. And so, you know, with that being said, what we're working on right now, because we do want to have programs for our kids this summer. And so, um, we've got John Pierce's son Calvin Pierce. Um, most of you know John is our head football coach at Salt Ross. His son's worked for us for several years now. He's going to lead our team and I'm going to work with him on some, uh, alternate small group activities that we can keep the kiddos out, uh, keep the social distancing at the park, but provide some level of venue of activities for the kids. Uh, we certainly think that'll be beneficial, uh, for the kids and for the parents in the community too, so. We'll continue to, to work along those paths. You know, the parks continue to be used heavily by our citizens, I, I think that's a fantastic, you know, thing that we're seeing, we're seeing lots of folks out walking, lots of folks hiking around town, using the different parks. Hats off to Robert Giannis and his team for the work that they're doing there. And then certainly, you know, once again, from an employee perspective, uh, you know, we talk about how do we lead the charge with wearing masks? How do we continue to limit the entrance into somebody's home? And certainly building inspection requires that, David Hale, Tony Catani, uh, have a good program there. And then we've also requested thermometers, uh, for temperature checks. Uh, the, the piece that's going to be important is, uh, if you're sick, you stay home. You know, and as, as I talk to different folks, I think that's, that's the other biggest thing that we can do as, as leaders in the community is encourage people, if you're sick, please stay home. You know, as Americans, we all have a tremendous work ethic, it's something that differentiates our country from others. But, you know, when you're ill, that's, that's when you have the highest probability to, to transmit the disease or any other illness. And so do the right thing for your community members, do the right thing for your coworkers and when you're ill, stay home. So we'll have the thermometers, uh, be able to use that, you know, sometimes folks just don't know, it's, it's good to check. And it was interesting, you know, as I, I've been reading some of the stuff online, there's a group of folks out there, and I know it's got some traction, uh, that we're doing biometric, uh, tracing and scanning across the globe, you know, based on devices that people wear and devices that people put, put stuff in on. And they can see where the hotspots were emerging based on, uh, where people's increased temperature were coming from. temperature were coming from. So I think it's a good leading indicator for us. I know a shorter report tonight, but any questions?
Eric, this is Rick. Thanks for the report and thanks, Acta, for the terrific updates and good news there relative to the numbers. Hopefully, the rest will come back the same way. One of the frustrations I'm hearing more and more, and I appreciate you touching on it, I'm getting a number of calls that started off with just one incident, it's now multiple incidents where people are wearing masks because they're concerned about their own health, and they're getting yelled at when they're in Porters by other citizens. I just find that, you know, it's like trying to yell at someone because you don't like the color shirt they wear. Everyone's got to make their own individual decisions. I just find it an appalling behavior on the part of some of our residents in Alpine.
Thanks for sharing, and I have received similar comments.
That's a great point there, Rick, because I've noticed people that are wearing, they get stared down at whenever I go to Porter's. I just look at them right back. I'm concerned of my health. You know, if you're not worried about yours, well, I'm sorry, but it is appalling that folks are getting to that point.
And you know, it's interesting because culturally, we'll put a hat on if we go outside so we don't burn our nose or our forehead, and we'll put sunglasses on so we don't impact our eyes. But, you know, when you're in the middle of a pandemic, logical thing would be to put on a mask, right? This seems like an easy-peasy thing from my perspective, and why you would demune or diminish somebody else is just, it's beyond reproach.
Right. Well, you know, when you don't wear that mask, you're also putting other folks in danger. You know, people say, well, you know what, it's my body, you know, I can do whatever I want with it. But, yeah, true, but you're also endangering the other folks, the elderly, the ones that have some health issues and whatnot. So people don't stop and think it's a two-way street.
Because we can have the coronavirus and not have symptoms.
Correct.
Without knowing it.
And I do think, you know, Acta's bringing up the Bloomberg article with some of the stuff that they're studying on post-impacts of coronavirus, does it represent itself? Does it act like other viruses that, once your body has it, like, you know, some people have those fever blister things because they got in too much sun when they were younger, and they never get rid of that. This comes back. So, you know, I think it's best to err on the side of caution with your own public health. You know, the governor is certainly paving the way as far as opening things up. And he said, I'm going to open up Texas the way I deem appropriate. But I certainly think we can take the high road and do everything in our capacity to keep ourselves healthy and encourage the right behavior instead of, you know, set a thought process and a mindset around town.
Is Dr. Efta still on? I guess she, okay. I was reading an article just for getting on Zoom. There's a second, it's an offshoot of the COVID-19. And this one's the one that just keeps, like, you know, we're talking about the fever blisters, the herpes and whatnot, that it just keeps coming back and coming back, you're never going to get rid of it. Have you heard on that issue yet?
Yes, Mayor. So there's a mutation in a strain that we've seen, we've been tracking in New York City specifically. New York City was actually infected by a strain from, that's similar to the one from Europe. And within a week, week and a half of finding this initial strain in New York City, a second strain that is completely unrelated but is much more contagious actually overtook most of the infections in New York City. And it was the latecomer to the game, and it was so contagious that it took over the vast majority of infections in New York City. Ended up encompassing about eighty-five percent of the infection. So there is a mutation in the strain that's making it even more infectious than the original one that had hit New York City. So they're trying to trace back now and figure out where else that specific mutated strain is to see where we're going to have concerns about transmissibility.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. I read it real quickly. I didn't go to any of the specifics or what, other than it was on the East Coast is where the strain was developing or showing its ugly head. But, you know, people, you know, it's still, it amazes me how folks are still treating this like a common cold. You know, this is deadly, you see people dying, you know, day in, day out, seeing the way it's multiplying and infecting folks and whatnot. But people still are under the impression just a regular common cold's going to go away. I just find that hard to believe that they're not really researching how deadly the strain is of virus. Do we have any?
That's it, Mayor. Next meeting, we'll have three staff members queued up. Eddie, Chief, and Scott Perry, as well as Marcy, so pretty deep there.
Well, good. You know, we just need to get the word out, you know, how serious this virus really is. People say, well, it's been hyped up, hyped up. Well, to make people aware, to take the precaution, that's what I think it's been hyped up for, for our own safety. So with that said, if you walk to the next item on the agenda, we don't have any city staff updates, and we'll move to the public hearings. And city manager, I'll give you that.
Yes, sir. The first public hearing is a public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero three, an ordinance establishing the transportation committee for the city of Alpine. Megan, did you have anybody email you wanting to make a comment on that?
No, I did not receive any emails on the transportation committee.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the next one, then.
One is a public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero four, an ordinance establishing handicap and emergency parking at Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church on Fifth Street in Diego Avenue.
I also did not receive any comments on this as well.
Any comments?
We didn't get any emailed in, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move over to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department-written reports, board appointments. Notice to the public, the following items are routine and administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item, and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in the normal sequence after the items, not requiring separate discussion, have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City manager.
Yeah. Honorable Mayor and City Council, there's three items on the consent agenda tonight. Item seven A is the approval of minutes from city council meeting on April twenty first, twenty twenty. Item B is the approval of minutes from the emergency city council meeting on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty. And item C is the approval of minutes from the special city council meeting on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And so we'll move over to the information or discussion items, and that'll go to Megan Antrim, our finance director.
Good evening, Council. As you're aware, in your package was the quarterly report for the investments. Please note that the recent ordinance that was approved is not included in this quarter. Everything took place in April and May, so it doesn't reflect the movement of funds for the different items that Council had approved. If you notice, we're still doing great. Our interest rates have dropped slightly the last, this is as of March thirty first. Of course, March is when things started to kind of change with the pandemic and the stay-at-home kind of procedures. So you'll see a slight decrease in our interest rates compared to the first quarter from the prior, the first quarter on the screen. So slight drop. Overall, we are still, of course, earning some of that interest. It is slightly lower than the prior quarters, but we're still doing great. We have a little over one point three million in reserves. It's excellent, considering the first time I walked through the door, we were begging and praying to pay bills, so it was exciting. If you have any questions or comments, let me know. The next quarter report, of course, will have more information with the ordinance that was passed for the road material. So you'll see some big changes here in the capital improvement, and you'll see some changes as well with the water department. And then, of course, the different items that were allocated, we're separating those out into their own line items, so that will be easier to keep track of.
So Megan, this is Rick. So the one point three million, can you please remind council ballpark? We've got a hundred thousand dollars of what we allocated out, and when you look at that next time, it'll be in the ballpark of what?
So the next go-around, you'll see a change more in the shift of where the money is located. We're moving money out of checking accounts with West Texas National Bank into the actual reserve accounts for the airport. You're looking at twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and five. You're also looking at moving some hot reserves into a checking account for the paving for thirty-nine seven. Money was reallocated for the infrastructure for the water department, including a recent purchase of a back truck for around four hundred thousand five hundred is what will be moved around. And then our capital improvements for the roads, you're looking at us moving money out of our checking accounts into reserves for another eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So you're looking at moving money around close to nine hundred thousand into reserves. This does help our interest rates. We do earn a little bit more money than we do with our regular checking accounts. And one of the things that we did get dinged on was we have too much money in our checking accounts, so it's better to put it in reserve.
Very good. So the number will be in the two million dollar range, and then, of course, we have dollars coming back out for expenditures.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, seeing now, we'll move over to item number nine. Action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to up to ten per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp, citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city, limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. City manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three dash zero two, an ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, providing for the regulation of short-term rentals, establishing authority to enforce, providing penalty clauses, providing severability clause, and providing for public publication and effective date. As I mentioned earlier, we did have a lot of comments on this. You know, probably good to take action just to discuss it this morning or this evening, and then come back at a later meeting if there are modifications that want to be made.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That we discuss, but take no action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three dash zero two regarding the regulation of short-term rentals.
Okay. Is there a second?
Our second.
Okay, Ramon seconds it. Any discussion?
So now lots of discussion. And I think that's what Eric was alluding to, and I'm sure the other council members got lots of input as well. Certainly, short-term rentals are an important part of what's going on from an economic standpoint in Alpine as people look to be able to utilize property they have. Would also say, you know, there's lots of things to be able to sort through, and for those who have the opportunity to read through the ordinance and all the details, you know, some terrific comments that came in. As I think about it, you know, one of the important things we're trying to do is get fifty percent of people that have short-term rentals who have not registered them and who are not paying their hotel occupancy tax funds. In my view, this is a really important element because bottom line is, people are not following the law, and that's part of what this ordinance was all about, is one, getting people to be compliant and move forward. Some of the pushback, and so I think everyone agrees there's the right intent there to want to be able to work it. But part of the pushback has come in, you know, people have said, gee, a million dollars of liability insurance is pretty high. And while I lease that airplane hangars, and I know what, and I've got five million dollars on airplane hangars to be able to cover what happens if an airplane were damaged inside one of the hangars that I lease out, that is not inexpensive, and I think people want to be able to have a discussion about what's the right level. There's also no question, we need to be able to do the right inspections of short-term rentals to make sure that they meet the code, because we never want to find someone who's using a short-term rental and create a safety condition in our town. And we'd certainly hate to have a fire or something for lack of code compliance. So in my mind, the intent is clear to the right one, but I think there's enough opportunity for discussion to be able to go through the feedback that I've given people that have approached me is, hey, if you've got some better thoughts and ideas, put them on the table, but this is an important element for Alpine to be able to move through. And so that's why I propose to discuss but take no action. Probably more opportunity for discussion amongst your short-term rentals, but we do need to make this happen because the fact is, half of the SDRs are not fulfilling their obligations to protect people and/or pay the hotel occupancy tax funds.
Thank you very much for the comments. Also on this, you know, it's a safety issue, and it protects both the leasing and the lessor on this, in case the property's not up to code, something happens, a fire, et cetera. It works both ways. So I think, you know, well, it's, we ought to have some good discussion and take in some ideas from folks on this, but I think it's very crucial for the safety of both parties.
Mayor, I feel that several questions and comments from people today about the short-term rentals, and some people sort of panicked when they saw it because they didn't read all the way through it. And once they started to do that, I think they began to realize that what Rick was saying was really the intent. It was to try to control them and make sure that a hundred percent of the short-term rentals are recognized and pay the hot tax. After those discussions, it seemed like the one thing that would stick out that might want to be tweaked is the parking issue, the issue that if you didn't have off-street parking, you couldn't have a short-term rental. And it seemed to me that it would be more reasonable to say, if you have street parking, you've got to limit your units to what's reasonable for parking on that street. You've got a house that could take three vehicles on the street, you know, maybe you could have three units. You don't want to have parking in the yard, but, you know, I don't think you necessarily want to cut somebody off if there's a place on the street to park that would be normal. But it's just a comment I had, a dialogue that I had with different people today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My husband.
Yes, Maria.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want, I just want to say that I think we need to step back a little bit and really get some good input from the short-term rental people that own the places and get some good feedback from them, because I don't want to run them out of business. We need them, and we need to have, where they bring in to us in the community, and I think it's important to keep them happy, too, the best that we can.
Yeah, and you're right, but, you know, it goes both ways also. They've got to meet us halfway on the safety issue, okay? And also on the hot money, because everybody else is paying, you know, the hotels are paying their hot money. So it's also fair that they pay hot money.
I think they're willing to. I think they just don't like what's being proposed right now.
Yeah, well, that's why it's up for discussion, is we're not going to take any action on it, we're just going to discuss it for right now.
I do have several individuals, Megan, on the Zoom meeting who would like to make a public comment. They have signed up and requested to be able to speak.
Megan, I can barely hear you. You're breaking up real bad. You're breaking up real bad.
I do have several individuals who want to speak. They did sign up. Is it okay if we start going through that list?
Yes. And then.
The first person to attend is Ms. Catherine Wright. Your unmuted Catherine.
So can you hear me?
Yep.
Actually, this is Dave Lee. We're married. So we haven't had time to fully review this document. Many questions, too many to get in this short period. So I wrote this down so it would be more consistent. We always pay our taxes, so we're kind of surprised there's people not. So this seems like not a very good way to solve that problem. So what is the problem that the city is trying to solve with this ordinance? And who supports this ordinance or regulation effort? How can short-term rentals be registered when a lot of people didn't know about it? We pay the hotel tax and this in addition. What's the timeframe to become registered? There's a lot of questions. The Holland Hotel does not have enough parking spaces for the hotel. More rooms than parking spots. Their guests often park in our parking area. We're right next to, right behind the Holland Hotel, by the way. So why would, because it's a guest quarters. Why would a short-term rental be held to a higher standard? Parking in West Avenue E was recently restricted to 30 minutes. What will happen to the guests and patrons of the old gringo, for example? So a lot of times people will park there because they drink much. Now you're going to force them to drive when they're drunk? That's not too good. So there seems like there's a lot of impracticalities with this. And it's a problem with making laws that are hard to enforce is people lose respect for the law. So how does the inspection of short-term rentals compare to inspections of hotels? I thought hotels were done by state health inspectors. Is there some sort of previously unknown health problem that has led to this? Rather than this coercive ordinance, because there's a $2,000 fine if you don't comply, why not work with the operators to come up with something that is workable? Talking to others trying to do the same thing with their rentals. Our mutual thought is why even be in the business? This is laid on top of everything else we have to do. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Just give me one second and I'll queue up the next person. Next person is Sarah Sibley.
Hi, everyone. I am an owner of four Airbnbs, actually right next door to Dave Lee and Kathy Wright that just spoke. And I'm opposed to this ordinance for a few reasons. I have, I have a little thing I'd like to read to the city. But before I read it, I just wanted to mention a couple of things I've heard the city council members talk about. And the first one was safety. And I wanted to point out, I don't know how many city council members have used Airbnb or have listed properties. But when you register a property through a website like Airbnb, they require you to send photos of your property. They require you to list all of the things you have on your property, like fire extinguishers, gas, smoke detectors. You can't just list your property willy-nilly. There is a set of standards set by Airbnb. I can't speak to other websites like Vacation Rentals by Owner, for example, what they require because I don't list my properties there. But Airbnb has the standard. And if you don't meet that standard, believe me, guests comment. They want to know whether or not you have a fire extinguisher. They want to know whether or not you have a smoke detector. And if you don't have those things and they've stayed at your unit, they complain at Airbnb. So I want to assure the city council members that there is already checks and balances in place with these short-term rentals. And so I'm just, I'm going to read something I prepared and hopefully it keeps my comments and parts short. So like I said, I'm an owner of two commercial buildings on Sixth Street. And I run, I have four apartments in those buildings, but three of them right now are short-term rentals. One of them is a long-term rental. And I'm against the passing of this ordinance as it's written. I understand the city's desire to want to increase tax revenue. I pay my state tax, city and state taxes. I think it's unfair that I pay my city tax and there's 50% of the Airbnb owners who don't. But I don't think we're having a $100 registration fee and a $350 conditional use permit fee is going to increase the number of people who are going to pay their taxes. We already pay city taxes. And so to require us to pay additional fees, my taxes to the city are between $4,000 and $5,000 a year. To pay already additional fees, what, what is that serving? I've already paid the city my portion. I also think the requirement of an annual inspection is too burdensome. What I want to know, does the city go and inspect every restaurant, bar, retail space, office space, hotel, and art gallery to confirm that that building is up to code? I don't think so. I don't think the city's going around inspecting buildings on an annual basis. And I could be wrong. And I think it's unfair to impose a $2,000 fine and a conviction of a misdemeanor if the property's not up to code. My building was renovated in 2006. I bought it two years ago. Somebody else completed the renovation. I'm assuming it was up to code in 2006. But is it fair to hold me to a different standard now? Even though it was built and renovated 14 years ago? I don't think so. But I will say I do have smoke detectors, fire extinguishers in every unit. I don't have gas, so I don't have anything to detect gas. But I think the annual inspection is unfair and burdensome. The parking situation, the parking part of the ordinance really concerns me. I, I'm a little different because my Airbnbs are in a commercial property downtown Alpine. I know a lot of Airbnbs are in residential neighborhoods and people are concerned about taking up residential parking. But I'm in downtown Alpine. I provide three parking spaces for my four units. So one person or one vehicle has to park on the street. If this ordinance is passed, I'm automatically in violation. And you don't require, you know, law offices on the street or rental owners or art galleries on the street to provide parking spaces. Why, why am I being penalized? Why can't my Airbnb guests park on the street when they're generating income and, you know, taxable revenue for the city? Finally, I would submit that the penalties.
I, I need to interrupt you, but we're at the three-minute limit. And we.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
The next person on the list is Liz Sibley. Give me one second.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. Your guests are going to be chatting with the Sibley clan this evening. I'm going to keep it short. I'm going to quickly go to the letter that I submitted today. Dear Alpine City Council Members and City Manager Eric Zimmer, thank you for the hard work you do on behalf of our community. As an owner of two short-term rentals in downtown Alpine and one in West Palm Beach, Florida, that I own with my two sisters, and two that I co-host with my son and daughter in Austin, I would like to comment on this policy. The $1 million insurance policy, in my opinion, is excessively high for regular folk that are on fixed incomes and rely on STR income to help pay your taxes, mortgages, et cetera. We are not corporations or big city hotels. Two, as city inspector of property with requirement, buildings, rooms, yurts, TPs, Airstreams, all the cool places that we are innovating in our community to entice people to come here rather than Martha or, you know, down south. I think it's, it's difficult, if not impossible, for them all to meet codes on file, which is part of this policy. And additionally, have to pay a fee for such a service. And if they're wanting compliance, they have to pay an additional fee when the code people come back. I feel it's highly intrusive and particularly onerous. I've never seen big city STR compliance codes that require this. And I think this is way over the top and will put many people out of business, including me. I do my best to be, live up to my super host status. And I've had over 1,500 rentals in the last six years with super host status. Short-term rentals thrive on visitor reviews from personal experience, detailed and accurate listing info, and owners' reputations as considerate, responsive, safe, and clean hosts. They essentially self-monitor and do not need yet another layer of code compliance. My motivation to provide accommodations in downtown Alpine on Murphy Street is to provide tourists with a great experience in our charming little downtown where they can park easily and walk everywhere. Under the terms of this ordinance, I will no longer have parking on Murphy Street and will be forced to close. I have never received any complaints from my neighbors concerning parking and don't anticipate receiving them. But I think we should be considered on a case-by-case basis if there is a complaint. I would imagine the intent of these policies is to bring all STRs into compliance with reasonable regulations and allow the city to provide reasonable oversight while generating tax revenue for the city. I sincerely believe that the proposed regulations are unreasonable and way beyond what other cities require. They will discourage compliance. And the timing of this could not be worse for most small business short-term rental people struggling to deal with how to reopen and be safe and compliant in the time of COVID. I appreciate your kindness and consideration.
Thank you.
I have two other statements that were emailed in. One I'm going to read off. It's from a Mr. Larry Nichols. He lives in Ward five and owns property in Wards one, three, and five. My comments concern the proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals. I feel that this is very serious and potentially damaging ordinance for several STR owners. Because of the possible serious effects of this ordinance, I feel that my action by the council should be delayed until we have open public council meetings and public hearings. I cannot believe that a Zoom meeting allows an adequate forum for discussion of such an ordinance. Larry Nichols. And the other public comment that was sent in, I'm going to share my screen. It's a rather long email. I would read it out loud, but I don't want to slaughter it. This is from Monica Kyroga and Danny Jen. They do own the Big Ben Biker Hotel. I have forwarded this email to Council Eric and Cynthia as well. I don't know if one of you would like to read it out or just take a few minutes to read it?
Well, Megan, by you posting it on the screen, folks can, you know, any, any community member will be able to go back and read that. After a while, you might want to leave it up there another 15, 20 seconds.
I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing. Those are all the comments and emails I received for this part of the agenda.
Hey, Mayor and Council, let me just make a couple of quick comments, if that's okay. Just wanted to, one clarification on something that Sarah had shared. She had noted that, that people would pay the conditional use permit plus the short-term rental. Actually, this was to replace for short-term rentals. You know, instead of them paying that $350 fee, they would pay a $100 fee. So it would be a reduction on that. And then, you know, I did want to kind of take us back to November. Well, October, November, December, it was a heavy, heavy topic at council meetings relative to non-compliance of short-term rentals. It was an action that staff had taken to go work on pulling that ordinance together. We originally committed to a timeframe of March. And then obviously with some of the actions that we took in March relative to, you know, limiting all travel except essential services. The timing wasn't, wasn't good there. You know, we really wanted to get this out from a dialogue perspective. You know, one of the things that Chris Ruzi and I had talked about, and that was, can you take these folks that have registered with us already? You know, we sent letters out to 70-plus people and we get about half of them to register their short-term rental and pay hotel occupancy tax. So, so those folks, you know, how do you go ahead and say, hey, we're going to waive that, that first-year fee? Because, you know, they're, they've been the good stewards following the rules and procedures. So that was something I had, had noted in the, in the cover letter as well. We'll, we'll work back with the comments. You know, Liz, Sarah, Kathy, Danny, Larry, and a couple others. Re-look at a couple of the elements of the policy. Bounce a couple more ideas off. I'm sure there'll be folks that will come out, share some thoughts with you, with you all and with Chris and I. And we'll come back and then re-look at this at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any, any more comments? I think, Maria, you had.
No.
You're okay?
I think.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and we'll call for the question now. Again, I want to repeat, we're not going to take any action on this, correct? Councilman Stevens?
That is correct. It was, the action was to discuss and take no action.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted, folks that are online, to clarify that there's no action being taken at this time. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to item two. City manager.
Item two is discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-04-03. An ordinance establishing the transportation committee for the city of Alpine. We had the public hearing earlier today. Cynthia Solis has also done all the proper postings in the, the local media.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-04-03, the ordinance establishing the transportation committee for the city of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? Ramon?
No.
Okay, see none? We'll go ahead and take action on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to item number three. City manager.
Honorable Mayor, City Council. Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on seven properties bids for trust property in the city of Alpine. The seven items are listed on the agenda along with the partial number, the winning bidder, and the amount of what they, they won. Of course, all taxing authorities are together on this. So the person hosting the bid to get these, you know, tax deeds resolved, needs resolution from our council accepting those bids.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go and make the motion that we approve the seven properties bid for trust property for the city of Alpine and allocate the property to the winning bidders as listed on the seven properties on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Our second.
Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion?
So, so Mayor, I do have a question to just more for understanding anything else. There's roughly $45,000 worth of property value here from these seven properties. The largest, of course, is the one for $20,501. Eric or Megan, does anyone have any idea how much we're going to get in back taxes?
With, I think, I think our take is, is that normal, like 27%? Or, you know, whatever out of the taxing authority we get. So.
Okay.
Not, not a lot of money.
Not a lot of money. The good news is they'll get added back to the tax rolls. So we'll get our, our, our fair share associated with it.
Yeah, that's, I was going to tell you, Council, we don't get the back taxes. We just get the, our percentage of this total. But they do start getting, start paying taxes in the future.
No, no, I understand that. I was just trying to understand. No, no, I understand that. I was just trying to understand the value from the tax roll standpoint.
Yep. Yeah, a couple of them, uh, one of them was that property just across Phelps from Stripes, between the two one-lays. So, you know, I think people, I think these bidders are going to put some dollars in investment in, into, uh, into that, which will be good for some of the local places like True Value and McGoys and that one.
Good. Very good. Any more discussion? Okay, motion was made in second, and there's no more discussion. All those in favor approving all seven, raise your right hand. Against, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And then we'll move over to item number four. Councilman Escobedo.
I'll make a motion to discuss, consider, and take action on the second and final ordinance of 2020-04-04, an ordinance just establishing handicap and emergency parking at Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church on Fifth Street and Diego Avenue.
Okay, I hear a second.
So, uh, I'll go ahead and second to approve the emergency parking at Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church as written in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to item number 10. Council comment, and I think I started with Mr. Stevens last time, so we'll go in reverse. Ms. Curry.
I don't really have much to say. It was a good discussion on the short-term rentals. I'm glad we were able to talk about it.
Okay. Council going to leave us.
I also don't have much to say other than, uh, I found that the discussion, uh, quite interesting regarding the, the use of masks in, in public. And interesting enough, I've had some people in, in my ward that are, are in favor, but also some that are saying, well, it's just a little too much. And I even have some people that think that the whole COVID-19 virus issue is a hoax, which is interesting. But, uh, it sent me to wondering, well, why, why can't we, as the city, something to consider is maybe doing one or two-minute, uh, spots on radio to emphasize the importance of wearing masks, the importance of, uh, protection, not only for ourselves, but also our other residents in our community. Uh, something to consider and, and say. And the second comment I'd like to make is, uh, to express my gratitude, a special thanks to all of the employees of the City of Alpine. They are out there daily doing their work. They're dedicated, loyal, and and I just want to say it's an honor, it's a privilege to see these white pickups with a City of Alpine symbol on, on the sides and know that their, our, our city employees are out there doing their darned best to continue providing the best possible services to our residents. So thanks to all of them.
Well, absolutely. I just commented earlier with, uh, City Manager, uh, on the same issue on the work being done in the alleys. Uh, that is, of course, and like City Manager said, that also led to the value and enhance the properties that are, that are along that, uh, alleyway. So, thanks to the guys out there and all the folks that, you know, the staff, both inside and out, that day in, day out, they do a hard work. And, you know, oftentimes, you know, they kind of get forgotten, but, uh, I'm glad the council is reconnaissance of, of reminding people about these folks that work out there. You know, they do a terrific job. They're, like you say, they're in the elements uh, all the time, and so my hat's off to them. And we'll move over to Councilman Escobedo. And I'm sorry.
I do agree with, with Ramon and with Rick, uh, especially with the workers that are out there, the City of Alpine workers. I do stop and I do take them water uh, whenever I can. That is something that maybe y'all might want to do every now and then. I know that Rick has done that quite often.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, and it's Councilman Stevens.
Did you get Betty in there?
Yes, I think she did.
Okay, okay. Uh, so, uh, I, I want to echo the comments that, that everyone else has made, but I also want to thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation for mothers. Uh, you know, I know there's a lot of us who are in council who call our mothers every night, uh, one way or the other, no matter where we're at, because mothers are so critically important, because most of us wouldn't be here. In fact, all of us would be here without them. So we want to do everything we can to preserve them, and, uh, I, I just think that was an awfully nice, uh, proclamation. I, I, I think that, you know, the, one of the nice things is the discussions we've all had. Uh, certainly a lot of different opinions and perspectives, uh, but getting them out on the table. Uh, and I would also say, uh, thank you, Eric and Megan and Cynthia for putting any protocol in place, because we did not get interrupted today on our Zoom call.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anytime. Yeah, I, I was thinking about, I was thinking about my mother last week, uh, at the age that she's at, and I'm still around. So I said, but she brought me to the world and, you know, her guidance helped me through where I've gotten through life, so I just thought it was proper and fitting to recognize all the mothers in, throughout the country, not only in Alpine and our personal mothers, but throughout the country and the world. So with that, you know, with them, a happy Mother's Day this coming Sunday. Also, we had a great meeting, great discussion, especially the, uh, Airbnbs. And I think there's more discussion that needs to be put in, or more thought that needs to be put into the ordinance, and of course, you know, we'll accept input from the folks that own some of these places, and perhaps we can get to resolve and move forward. So with that, thank you all very much, and, uh, City Manager Zimmer, I know you took some time off. You needed it, and I hope you're enjoying it. Well, maybe not, because you're still on the phone and staying busy all day long, but, uh, you know, it looks like there could be some end light at the end of the tunnel in this virus, especially in our part of the country, you know? Majority of the people have taken the precautions. There are still a few that deny it, but, uh, a lot of folks I've seen with their mask on and whatnot, which is great to see. A lot of the businesses I go into, employees are wearing them, the shields are up, so I think we're doing the right thing, you know? At first, you know, like I said before, it was kind of a hard move on our part, but I think it was the right move. I can sleep at night knowing that Alpine is safe thanks to the council. With that, y'all have a good evening, and we have no executive session today, so I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that way adjourned.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, or the second there's someplace, and no discussion on this means adjourn.